All right, good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, May 13th. It's the monthly meeting of the Planning Board. If everyone could stand and say, "The pledge of allegiance."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda is a special permit, temporary structures, public hearing for an annual tent renewal for Tangerini Spring Farm. And they are not here at the moment, but we're going to have Nicole read the public hearing notice.
Town and Millis Office of Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing in accordance with provisions of Chapter 48, Section 11 Mass. General Law. Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, at 7:30 p.m. in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Tangerini Spring Street Farm, 139 Spring Street, Millis, Mass. Requesting a special permit under Section 13. Special permit conditions, J temporary structures of zoning bylaw of the town of Millis for installation of a 30-by-60-foot seasonal event tent for property located at 139 Spring Street, Millis, Mass., map 30, parcel 48. Copy of the application and site plan is on file in the office of the town clerk and on the planning board's front page. Any person interested or wishing to be heard in the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right, so this is an annual tent installation permit. So basically, they set up so that the fire department can look at it. We can make sure there's enough handicap access parking, and it's the same as they have done every year, so there's really no change. So I make a motion. Oh, is there any public discussion? Any discussion from the board?
It's already up, so.
Okay. Well, come on, we don't want to. So I make a motion that we approve the -- we'll close public hearing, sorry. Motion's been made?
Second.
All right, motions been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that we approve the temporary tent for 139 --
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Before you make that motion, since they are not here to comment as to whether there are any changes that they're looking for from last year, can we move to grant the special permit as it was granted the last year? So there are no changes I have.
Oh, there aren't?
Go, go ahead.
I've emailed Linda back and forth when she had to apply for this, and it's the same, the detachments and everything are exact same as last year.
Yeah, just one.
So I'll second that motion. I like the chemicals.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what's.
We'll make a motion that, so the motion was made that it was approved with no changes to the previous permit. And that motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's fine. All right, I make a motion that we approve the special permit for the temporary structure at 139 Main Street.
Second.
All right, motions been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, great, well, thank you. Next item on the agenda would be a special permit with site plan approval for public hearing continued for 1380 Main Street, proposed private dog park.
Town and Millis Office of Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing in accordance with provisions of Chapter 48, Section 11 Mass. General Law. Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, at 7:35 p.m. in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of David L. Lapdog LLC, 20 Cutting Drive, West End, Mass., 02090. Requesting a special permit for with site plan approval under Section 13(c)(1) of the zoning bylaws of the town of Millis for redevelopment of existing structure, structure, excuse me, to convert a private dog park for property located at 1380 Main Street, map 21, parcel 17, Millis, Mass. Copy of the application and site plan is on file in the office of the town clerk and can be reviewed at the town's record. Any person interested or wishing to be heard in the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right, so this is just a continuation of the hearing. We had the Townsend engineer, consulting engineer, take a look at the plan. There was a handful of comments. If I could ask the engineer just to hit the highlights of the comments that were done. We don't have to go dig, we don't have to dig deep into it. We'd like to kind of work our way through this, but there was some option. And there was one thing that I did want to bring up on GCG's letter. And this is just a question to you. It says, "The project calls for renovating the existing building to a private dog park and sit-down full-service restaurant," which is non, okay, so that was a not correct in the letter. And that's fine, we just wanted to clarify that, that, okay, so. All right, that's all checked off the list? If you could just give us a high-level.
Sure, I'll do the abridged version.
Yep.
For the record, I'm Jeff Kane with LAL Engineering Group, representing David Lap on this project.
All right, if you could speak in the mic, because the folks at the cable yell us.
Some of the, again, to get to the, Chris, the crux of the issue, there was four outstanding issues, really. One was the first and foremost with the drainage. We had been asked to move the drainage from the existing right-of-way onto our property entirely with some back and forth with GCG. It just didn't seem to make that basin work where we were proposing, so we ended up abandoning that idea. Moving the infiltration to the rear of the building here. This will be stone trench with chambers capturing a quarter of this roof area, and it will capture up to, including the 100-year storm. We'll also have infiltration under this area right here, which is the artificial turf area, so there's stone involved with that. So between these two areas, we do capture the required volume that we need for infiltration. And now for the treatment, we've got the new asphalt area you see here in gray. All that area will run through two deep-sump catch basins and through a proprietary separator before it ties back into the municipal system at the existing connection out at Main Street. So those take care of the treatment portion and the infiltration portion. That's really the main issue that happened with the drainage. The other big site plan issues, you'll see here, the artificial turf area was reduced. Initially, we had the entire back area artificial turf. This has been reduced, and we'll have mulch on the backside here. That was to get to the redevelopment standard for the impervious areas. So that did get reduced slightly. The other change you'll see is we did actually cut out one parking stall on the west side of the building here, so that impervious area too went away too. So those are the big site plan issues you're going to see. The other questions you had asked us about was the right-of-way and to have Attorney Watzke put an opinion in as to what that right-of-way is, how it functions. And he did put that letter into you folks. To kind of summarize it, it's really based on his review of the deeds and the previous projects that were approved. This right-of-way, which you'll see in pink, functions more today as a driveway. Is that a correct assumption? And it does not have applicable regulations that involve with the zoning bylaws with it. So his opinion was put in, so I don't know if you folks have read that yet, but. The other issue was the parking requirements and how much we would be required to put and how much we're proposing. Again, Attorney Watzke did put in a formula where we base things on public assembly at one space required for four seats inside and an additional business over 5,000 square feet, but one space being provided for every 15,000 square feet or a fraction thereof. And that came up with 30 spaces being required, and we're proposing currently right now 42. And the last item really was the list of required waivers we would need for the project to move forward. They really focus around the parking on the site and the fact that we're constrained by what's out there now, be it from setbacks or existing buildings or things like that. We're trying to reduce as much site impact as possible, so we've got reduced parking stall lengths. We're trying to eliminate the curbing need over on this side, since we are draining everything back into the site. We won't need that curb over there. And we're also looking for a shared loading space that exists on this side of the building. That's based on the fact that the way the building, the way the business is conducted, most of these deliveries will happen during off-peak hours during the daytime. Most of the business will be either early in the morning or after-work hours, so we're saying we can put signage in this area here to control 15-minute parking and still have plenty of time for loading and unloading there. And we also had a request for reducing or eliminating landscape islands in the interior of the lot. Again, we're trying to get as many spaces as we can, being 40 for the size of the building's really not that much. The idea of reducing any spaces along this area just to put in middle islands, we didn't think would actually help the business. But we have met the tree requirement on the perimeter of the property. We're proposing. The landscaping plan, we are proposing a significant number of trees on the perimeter of the property. These will be involved with the conservation with the buffer enhancement area, and these will just be perimeter trees for screening. We don't take those count to effect, but we did count up the trees along the frontage in here. So we're beyond the tree requirements we need. We're just looking not to put them on the interior of the site so we can maintain that parking count.
Okay.
So those are the four main.
All right, great. Well, thank you for walking it through. Were there any questions from the board? No. Mike, you want to, did you, they hit everything? Do you want to?
Sure.
Yep. If you'd just identify yourself so the folks.
Mike Carter, GCG Associates. Our peer review, basically, they've addressed all but two minor items, which are pretty easy to change your plans on. Really, the biggest thing is the waiver request. If those are acceptable to you, then they've addressed all the comments that we've had so far.
Okay. All right, great, thanks. So the waiver that they would be looking for on that would be waiver request number two was GCG recommends adding a parking table to the final plan to show the required proposed parking spaces. What else? The other one, and actually, do you have the waivers, actually?
Sure.
Yeah, just rather than me read them from the markup.
You want to go through each one, just?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, you have it right here. Okay, even better. Yeah, why don't you run through it and we can read it.
waiver one, number one, was section two is in the definitions. The definition for a loading space and the size of it. We're requesting the ability to utilize two parking spaces for a shared delivery space. The use of the two spaces will provide a loading area of 18 by 30 when accommodate a typical single-unit vehicle or a delivery truck. And based on this, we're looking to waive the requirement for the size of that loading space. Number two is the parking space sizing, again, on the section two in the definitions. Parking space was listed as nine feet by 21 feet, and we are requesting a size of nine feet by 19 feet. Number three was section eight, Table 5, number of loading areas per one unit. Again, this goes back to what we just mentioned before. We are looking to share a loading space with the parking spaces out there based on the schedule that's anticipated for the actual trucks unloading. So we're looking for a waiver for actually having a designated loading spot. Section eight, C1B, the access aisle entering, access aisle for the building should be paved. Right now, we have an existing compacted gravel surface that comes up along the east side of the building here. We're looking to maintain that is, since it's been the historic use of that building, to have that gravel accessway. We're looking to leave it as it is, and that's really, at this point, it's really a cost savings as well to the amount of paving in it. Section eight, C1C, substantial bumper remains ready steel or timber used as a curb along the sides of the paving. Again, as we requested, along this west side here, we're looking to eliminate that need since we're grading everything back into the parking area and subsequently will capture it into that drainage swale. There will be no damage or any runoff going toward the other direction. And section eight, C2P, this was the tree layout. We're supposed to have 10 total trees, and there's supposed to be broke-up landscaping islands in the inside interior. We're looking to eliminate the need for that, but still have the more than the required number of trees on the perimeter of the site.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for running through that with us. Were there any comments from the board on that? I mean.
I just have one on the curb cut and the shared driveway. Who's going to maintain, I mean, is that, do we have an agreement? Who's going to maintain that? Because, I mean, right now, there's not many vehicles use that. And anything that has a stone-type base, that's going to be, there's going to be a pothole city there. So is that, I mean, you don't want your business to be like that, and I know you're probably going to, somebody's going to take care of it, but, and right as you come in, and I can't think of, when you come in off the curb cut from the cement, there's no cement sidewalk there, but the driveway accesses cement. Where does it, is there anything right after, does it turn stone right after the, I just don't remember?
It turns to stone, right?
It does, okay, right after.
There is a delineation right.
Yeah.
Right there. So this apron here is all pavement.
Is all, yeah.
And then it does switch to gravel here, in which case it would be turning into asphalt or coming up in parking in there. So this is the existing asphalt. With the grading down here, same with the puddles and all, you know, this is, we do have a low point there where we are putting the catch basin in, so hopefully that will capture that.
I would be comfortable with, I mean, we're going to, and you're going to pave all, you're going to put new pavement in all around that?
All around here. This is a new section.
I'm not looking to be unreasonable, but something of just the first, you know, well, this is something, I mean, that you tell us that.
Typical driving path, is what you're saying, really. I think you'd probably be amenable to that. I mean, it's more a matter of GCG wants to redo the drainage calculations to put that asphalt in.
Yeah, could we do, could we do it where they, you just put a thing where they?
Just a couple of feet, like you just said.
Typical driving path.
Yes, yes.
That's fair.
Fair?
Yeah.
Very fair.
Okay.
And thank you both, the drainage. I know I was probably the one. More on that, I think that's more amenable, as long as, you know, I know Mike's a person who looked at that as very, as a stickler on that. So I think that works out well. You're redefining that.
All right, was there anything outstanding from GCG? Did you, Mike, you got everything you needed from them, correct? Okay, so all the documents that they need are in?
Close.
Oops, sorry.
I don't believe, they're not asking for waiver of the table. I'm assuming you'll put the parking table, the parking table on the plan.
We're going to put.
Yeah, and then, and then there's really, and then connecting the downspouts from the.
I agree with what you want.
It's pretty simple.
Okay.
So there should be a revision to the plan. It's taking about an hour.
Okay.
So, but otherwise, the waivers, waivers are the biggest thing.
Yeah.
If those are all acceptable to you, whereas just mentioned, if he agrees to pave a little strip, if you can just show that on the plan, that probably would be a good idea.
All right, so I can make a motion, what, go ahead.
Just one question. Has town council reviewed Attorney Watzke's opinion on the right-of-way? Because we have his legal opinion with regards to that right-of-way. Is that something that town council should?
I could ask. I mean, that's a good question. I mean, it's a right-of-way, I don't know, we're not really doing anything to the right-of-way. You know what I mean? It's not really, it's not.
No, I know there was just question with regards to that right-of-way.
Well.
Should it become a, because it affects the front, because the frontage will lot be, there are two lots behind that they're using it and affect, just going off of what was in Mike's, in Mike's comments. So I'm just.
Well, I mean, I guess it couldn't hurt, we could ask, we could ask Jay to take a peek at it. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a shared space. I don't necessarily know.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Couldn't we make that a contingent, I mean, with, if we're looking to approve the town council's review and that both attorneys can, you know, work it out? He's coming, I can hear him coming down the hallway. Is it me or?
Yep, yes.
I think it's a wrong move.
Yeah, I mean, I, we could ask, we could ask Jay, we could make a contingent on the pause or review from town council or confirmation of the opinion. We could do that. Yeah, that, I mean, the plan will have to be updated to show the last couple of items. And the, we'd have to vote on the waivers. And we'd have to get the confirmation from town council, but that sounds reasonable. I mean, these are all small items in my mind. You know, they're, they're basically reusing something that was used already, so I don't.
I mean, most importantly, Mr. Chair, is that the developer may not be aware of what was just dumped on them. Route 109 is going to get paved within the next couple of weeks, and they're going to have to need to do something in the next day or two. Not day or two, but you know what I'm saying? I mean, to get, they need to get a water service put into that property before that's paved.
Okay.
So for them to delay a decision another month, I don't see the need.
Okay. Here, hold on.
If the plan has to be revised, you can't close the public hearing.
If I may, Matthew Watzke here is counsel. I've seen lots of cases like this where a hearing is closed and a vote is taken with the vote saying it's contingent on submittal of a plan that does A, B, C, D as a, as a submittal of a final plan. But that wouldn't be at all unusual. I think that there's, there's the water service, and there's also the manhole catch basin that's going to be within Route 109 right-of-way that ought to get put in right away. In order, in order to make that a logical thing to do, we really ought to have the hearing closed.
No, I get it. No, I mean, that makes sense. So the question is on that, is we could do it, we could, we could, in my mind, we could do that, but it would be, that we would be at the risk of if, let's just say, our town council comes back and says that your opinion on the right-of-way is 100% incorrect. That would be the only thing I, I don't think that's going to happen, but, you know, I don't want to put the town at risk. So I, you know, personally, I'd be willing to go ahead and, you know, and.
Because it's all, the onus is all on the owner.
Correct.
Of the property. He's going to have to make that decision.
Yeah, if I may through the chair, I think the risk is rather low also. Remind folks, the last time I was here to discuss that analysis of the right-of-way and whether the setback is for the parking spaces is required from the line of the right-of-way. And the analysis was that the setback is only required if it's a street, and the definition of a street is provided right there in the zoning bylaw, and a street is something that's, that's a public way that's maintained by the public or it's been open to the public passage. And none of those criteria that are built into the definition of a street are evident on this site. And members of the board said, yeah, right, it's, it can't be a street because it hasn't been open to the public passage, and it's definitely not publicly owned. So I don't anticipate that town council's going to have a problem with it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just to clarify, I actually, I do agree with Attorney Watzke. I was just asking a question.
Yep.
If that was something we wanted to consider. I, I don't, I didn't bring it up because I personally think there's going to be a problem. It was just a question.
Okay. Well, you bring a question up, you make me nervous, you don't want to make me nervous. Okay?
So, Mr. Chair, maybe I'll take back. Is the idea, Camille, is changing of the plan is because of what I just stated with the, adding the extension of it?
There was going to be some minor changes anyway, based on.
Okay, okay. I was going to say, because I'll withdraw that and just do it. I mean, but.
Just, as a point of information, in other towns that I do this in, they do make a condition on the approval modifications to the plan to address any comments. That's done frequently in a lot of towns. When it's, when it's down to like a couple little minor issues, not if you got to move a building or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, fair enough. All right, I mean, like I said, everything we've talked about are all minor things, so I have no issue.
And I'm definitely comfortable with town council reviewing.
Yeah.
And I'm sure both of yous are going to.
Yeah. We're just, we're just crossing the t's, dotting the i's, so. All right, so I'm.
I have to vote on all the waivers individually.
Yep. Well, I have to close the public hearing, right, first?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I want to, so we'll do the waivers individually. Do you want to do them together or individually? It's up to the board. Do you guys want to just do them all together? Okay. All right, I make a motion that we approve the waivers as submitted from LAL Engineering. There are a total of six. All right, motions been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that passed unanimously. Then, now I can make a motion to close public hearing.
Yeah, discussions.
Yep, if all the discussion's done. Everyone good? Anyone in the audience? Okay. All right, I make a motion to close, close the public hearing. All right, motions been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and so I make a motion that we approve the special permit for 1380 Main Street with, with the revisions that need to be made on the plan. And what was the other thing we had to make? Sorry. He's, oh, go ahead.
Just amend that motion to approve the special permit with site plan approval.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the special permit with site plan approval. The wording and stuff gets me. And subject to the submission of the requested updates to the plan. Do I have a second? All right, motion.
You could do the amendment for the town council.
Oh, and the amendment, and subject to town council's approval of the lawyer's opinion on the right-of-way. All right, motions been made, second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. All right, good. Good luck, we got it done. Thank you.
Thank you.
So when do you think?
I'm getting a call, so I am very excited for this one.
Do you need a trainer?
Probably will.
Hey, Mike. Mike Carter. Could you draft the decision for us? We have that all together, and make sure that they, yeah, they see it too, just to make sure. Yeah, great, thank you. Yep, perfect, thank you.
Okey-dokey.
All right, good, thank you.
I have a list of licensed drain layers that may be able to help you get it done quicker that have worked in that area. It's on our website, you know, so email me or call me tomorrow, and I can send it to you.
All right, good luck.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is special permit, temporary structures, public hearing for 1313 Main Street Tractor Supply.
Town and Millis Office of the Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing in accordance with provisions of Chapter 48, Section 11 Mass. General Law. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, at 7:40 p.m. in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Aaron Knight Bay State Tent, 150 Lorham Street, Tewksbury, Mass., 01876. Requesting a special permit under Section 13. Special permit conditions, J temporary structures of the zoning bylaw of the town of Millis for installation of a 20-foot-by-30-foot tent structure for store event at 1313 Main Street Tractor Supply, Millis, Mass., map 22, parcel 4. Copy of the application and site plan is on file in the office of the town clerk and on the planning board's front page. Any person interested or wishing to be heard in the application should appear at the time designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
This one was asked to be withdrawn by the applicant's request because they wouldn't have enough time to get it passed, so. That's that. So I make a motion to close public hearing? All right, motions made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Next item.
We need to approve the withdrawal request.
Oh, sorry. I make a motion to approve the withdrawal request. All right, motions made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda would be approval of minutes from April 8th, 2025. So I make a motion that we approve the minutes as written. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okey-dokey. We have June and July meetings. Do you want to try to do August, Camille, or you could?
I have that to you.
We've got two months in advance, I think we're good.
You're going to get something in front of us, right?
Yeah, exactly. What else? That would be about it for now. So unless there was any other business?
Two things. One, we're going to have a department head meeting, and we usually go over new developments and stuff like that this week.
When is that?
Is the 14th. Is that tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
I think no, but.
Yeah. That's, the town administrator, he recreated, if you remember from the previous town administrator, he used to have it every month. he used to have it every month, so he's doing it quarterly. And that's going to be, if it's the 14th, or maybe it's the 15th, it's, it's either tomorrow or Thursday. And I want to commend Nicole for doing a fantastic job on that red book. I think we're on page 28, and she can give more of a...
We did spend six meetings just to make it through the definition section. We actually have a few left that we are looking into, but this, the committee actually has really been diligent about going through, finding typos, finding inconsistencies. We have a few that we've put on hold until we get to that section of the bylaw before we start playing with the, or determine whether or not we need to play with the definition. But, and we are waiting on town council's opinion on a couple of things. And then we will move, we will present probably sections one, two, hopefully like three and four to the select board, out to the planning board, and then determine how you would like to go forward. We have discussed it, it is our recommendation to the planning board that this go-to-town meeting piecemeal, because it's probably, at this rate, I would say it's going to take us a year, and with the amount of changes we have, in particular to the definitions, this would end up being a five-hour count meeting just on this one thing, if we were to try to do it all at once.
Okay, well, it's, there's a lot to go through, so I'm not surprised. Does it make, and just as a question, does it make sense to present the, all the updates to the definitions as like one chunk?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, that's what we will do. And as I said, it may, this board may decide that we just want to do, I mean, section one is just, it's the purpose and intent, and it's just an addition of one sentence, so it would, you know, we may want to do in the fall just sections one and two, because then sections, you know, three, four, and five, it's looking like each one's going to have a couple of amendments. Whereas right now, section two, there's probably about 25 to 30 definitions that we want to change. Some are, as I said, some are typographical mistakes, some are very simple, and some of them will need some, you know, explanation. So, but once we have all of that clarified and we can submit, I don't want to submit this to the board and say, we're still waiting on this, we're still working on that, we're still working on that. So instead of giving everybody else that...
Poor Camille, poor Camille's over there cringing like, oh my God.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Just so you know, every time the bylaws are amended at a town meeting, after they get approved by the attorney general, I physically update the zoning bylaw, have to have it reprinted, so just keep in mind that there's costs involved doing it piecemeal like that, as far as like redo, retyping, reprinting, publishing and all that, just keep that in mind.
All right, well, that's, I think, something to keep in mind.
We're going to get past page 26, so...
Actually, I have a question.
Yep.
Unrelated. It came up in some prior discussions. It's not clear whether we allow short-term rentals in the town. I couldn't find any documentation saying that we do not, although people seem to be of the opinion that we do not. I think that might, might be something we want to look at defining.
I don't know if that would, I don't, we, somebody had mentioned that would be in licensure, not necessarily...
That would be a general bylaw to handle by the select board. Oh, sorry. Yeah, that would be in the select board's purview, because that would be under licensing.
Okay. I didn't see it in the town bylaws.
No, I don't, I, we don't have anything. I think mostly because nobody's ever really thought about it. The issue arose in some of the discussions on the accessory dwelling units, that those units, once constructed, might be more appealing in a town like Millis for the use of short-term rentals. Most people aren't looking for a short-term rental, you know, of a four-bedroom house.
Right.
But, you know, that was something that, you know, at the hearing, when I presented to the FINCOM, I had stated that would be for, for the select board to make that determination if they want to create something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Right, Mr. Chair, I think that both of our articles that were presented at town meeting were presented well. There was not, you know, there was good discussion, and it was nothing, so I think we did our job with presenting two good articles at town meeting.
Yep, and we, and like, you know, like we said, the biggest thing was that we did it to protect the interests of the citizens of Millis. That's, you know, there was no agenda on anything. We have no agenda, we're not that smart. We just basically wanted to make sure we had something that we would have, you know, some control over the things that are, things are changing, so we're trying to manage them so we have some sort of control, so we don't end up with goofy things happening, so. All right, well, with that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motions been made, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody. Thank you.